Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, December 12th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. The time is 7:30 PM. We have three items today for the Committee of the Whole. But before we get started, we just wanted to check if there are any sign-ins on the sign-in sheet?
No.
None? Okay. In that case then, since there are no signatories on the sign-in sheet, we will just proceed with our presentations and then continue with council discussion on each item. And the first item that we have today is our 2024 Proposed Community Events, and to that we will defer to Assistant City Manager Lori Cisak.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The proposed list of 2024 community events for the City of Rowling Meadows will offer another year of exciting music, features, and attractions to entertain residents near and far. In 2024, we'll be exploring two additional enhancements to the event calendar. First, as directed by members of the Economic Development Committee, business advocate Martha Corner and I have been working on details for a Wednesday evening food truck event from May to September at a location along the Kirchhoff Corridor. Another item of exploration is adding Oktoberfest elements to the October Hometown Hoedown Fall Fest that will aim to attract crowds from out of town and thus be considered a destination event. All additions to this event will stay within the specified city budget. Please know that none of these events are set in stone, and we are certainly open to council's feedback. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments regarding the proposed calendar for 2024 community events? Okay, none here. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to our second item this evening, which is our Proposed Business Development Strategic Plan Overview. And this evening, that will be presented by Business Development Manager Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm pleased to provide a high-level overview of the first-ever Business Development Strategic Plan for the City of Rowling Meadows. This was done entirely in-house. No consultants were involved. Can you hear me okay?
You can hear me, but we will do this right now.
Okay. I'm sorry. I feel badly. So we'll just...
You don't want to be distracted either, so...
We'll keep going here. I think this is... Okay. Anyway, this was an in-house exercise, and we engaged business owners, residents, developers, real estate brokers, and it was a very good experience. We dug down deep into a number of data, including CoStar, which is a commercial real estate data service on the Internet, which was very effective in getting us really good information, actually happy information, about vacancies, et cetera, in Rowling Meadows. So that said, I'll just quickly go over the plan. CoStar helped us reveal the fact that we are very competitive in the commercial real estate market. In the office market, we're in the middle between the Schaumburg Area sub... or actually, yeah, between the Schaumburg Area submarket and the Chicago Regional Market, which runs from Southern Wisconsin all the way to Northwest Indiana. And office vacancies pretty much have a life of their own right now. I mean, how do you put a metric on it? There's so much change going on. But more optimistically, on the retail side, we are the lowest retail vacancy within the Chicago Area submarket. We're below the submarket percentage, and also the Chicago Regional Markets. We're at 3%, all-time low. Similarly with industrial, all-time low at 2%, lower than the Northwest Cook County submarket and the Chicago Regional Market. So these are the bar graphs. You can see we're doing real well. Lower retail vacancy rates and lower industrial rates than the surrounding area and greater Chicago area. Going forward, our industrial vacancy is projected to remain the lowest through 2028, according to CoStar. Office vacancy in the middle, and hopefully we'll see some return to normal on that, but who knows what that's going to look like. Retail vacancy rate projected to remain lower through 2028. To reinforce the positive nature of our economic development climate, we have 100 million redevelopment of the Atrium Corporate Center, 10 million redevelopment of the former Sam's Club, Silvery Planning in anticipation of Arlington Park redevelopment, both in the Northwest Industrial Area adjacent to Arlington Park and also Kirchhoff Road Corridor. We are going through a city rebranding initiative, which will be very interesting and helpful for our marketing purposes. We are looking to identify the highest and best uses of the former city fire station, as well as vacant properties along Kirchhoff Road. That's probably the reason for the moratorium. Administration of the Next Level Northwest Professional Business Coaching Program, which is gaining traction, and the businesses that are participating are very pleased with their impacts. Redevelopment of the former Holiday Inn into the new Aloft Hotel. I drove by tonight. The parking lot was full. ATF Life Sciences building expansion and construction of several quality restaurants, including Raising Cane's, Casa de Luigi, Phoenix Flame, Kong Dog, Janot, sorry, barbecue chicken. The list goes on, and we have yet more to come. Administration of the Restaurant Incentive Program. So far, we've had Kong Dog, Phoenix Flame, Cafe on the Grove, and Ding Tea. Administration of our Cook County property tax incentives for commercial properties in the industrial and retail and office spaces. Collaboration with Meet Chicago Northwest and special events throughout the year. The general goal of the planning effort was to articulate our business development strategies going forward for the next three years for the planned horizon of 2024 through 2026. It's meant to be fluid and very easy to update as business conditions change. We engage local stakeholders and leaders. We are planning to adapt to changing business conditions accordingly and continue to develop programs to enhance the business development and encourage investment. Again, it's a three-year plan horizon. Plan focus areas, generally speaking, include business attraction, business retention and expansion, encouraging entrepreneurship, financial resources and incentives, local and regional partnerships, communication, outreach and marketing, community vibrancy, events and quality of life, and development, redevelopment, and repositioning activities of our commercial properties throughout the city. Workforce development is always very important to keep our workforce upskilling and adapting, again, to changing business environments. And then as well, last but not least, Arlington Park redevelopment impacts. So that's the presentation. If you have questions, please advise. Otherwise, we look forward to taking this plan to City Council for adoption by way of a resolution in December 19.
Martha, are there any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to add kudos to Martha and the team for doing this. On behalf of EDC, we did have a two-hour meeting where we went through this line by line by line. So feedback's been provided there, and it really does align with the goals that we had set out for EDC last year. It really has kind of brought them to life to put some, I shouldn't say some, a lot of context around. Because that's what EDC struggled with, is we've got these goals, but we didn't have any context around them. So there was definitely a tie to goals EDC had for the city in EDC last year that was tied together nicely in the strategic plan. So, thanks Martha.
Thank you. I think the takeaway of this plan effort is that we're doing something right, and we can continue to build the momentum going forward, and the plan will help us do that.
Thank you, Martha, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Yes, Alderman Kohler?
First, I want to say, nice job.
Oh, thank you.
Nice job.
Team effort.
Not only on this plan, but you know, when I walk around the city and go to some of the new restaurants, they're really good. They're really good. They're diverse. And so, thank you for all you're doing on that. A couple of feedbacks on the plan itself. I think it's a very good plan, so there's no real criticisms. It's just some things to think about. First thing is, kind of a strange technical issue. Can you identify with the pictures with captions? Because I'd really like to know where all these places are that are in that...
Oh, okay. Well, I can, I don't have the pictures.
No, it's okay. I mean, I'm saying we go...
I can sidebar with you after the meeting.
There's some really nice pictures.
Yeah, the pictures generally, they're not stock photographs. They're of business locations throughout the city and parks and everything.
Some are very contemporary, too, because you just had the grand opening of Janot's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is, that just happened last week, right?
In the final version, we'll edit in captions for what locations are what.
Okay. Just put in the back where the page shows and so what that picture is.
Okay.
I was just curious on that. Brand, brand, brand. I don't know. We're working on branding, and that's important because we want to get the brand. The one thing that I thought we could, two things we might want to think about, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an adoption plan, but transportation. I think transportation is a big part of businesses coming here. We are really in a unique spot with the two crossroads of two major highways here. I always tell people I can get to downtown Chicago in 30 minutes on a good day. You get less than 30 minutes on a good day. And that's really important to a lot of peoples. Can I get to the city? So transportation is a really important thing to highlight for the city, including the fact we got a commuter train that's right at our back door here. Including, when you look at the Arlington redevelopment, you can't get to that Arlington redevelopment without going through Rowling Meadows, at least of the highways. So transportation is an important part. The other thing, and maybe it's kind of in there, but I think infrastructure, we need to look at our infrastructure. Because I think City Manager Sabo had mentioned in one of his notes something about how one of our business development things is being held up a little bit because of electric power. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Yeah, and so we got to look at our infrastructure, especially the electric power, which I think is going to be very important going forward as we try to get away from fossil fuel type of things. Do we have the infrastructure in place to support the next generation of businesses? So that's just my...
Very good. Thank you very much.
Excellent plan.
Thank you.
Alderman Kohler, any additional comments or follow-up? Okay. Sounds like that's it on our end here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Martha, appreciate it. Then, we will move on to our third and final item this evening, which is an overview of the Proposed Employee Manual. And to that, we will defer to Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Glenn Cole, who will provide that presentation for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So again, this is, this is to present another relatively in-depth topic. Our city's revised Personnel Manual, which staff is recommending to you for consideration at your next City Council meeting. Much like my last presentation to this body, you know, good news, I can breathe through my nose and my mouth at the same time, so that'll make it a little easier for me. Bad news, there's just a lot of material here, so I ask for your patience, and please, if there's something you'd like to talk about more, just jump in, and we're happy to pause and talk through that. But our goal here is really to highlight some of the key changes and just skim through the rest and make sure you're aware of the document you're working with and have a chance to ask questions. So the Personnel Manual, right, is this very important, a little bureaucratic document, but it's really trying to reduce to writing, to use a legal term, the relationship that we, the city, an employer, have with our staff, an employee. Many of the policies throughout this document apply to all employees. We would call them management rights, you know, directing how work is done or the expectations people have to meet. When it comes to pay and benefits, those topics for unionized employees are typically governed by their collective bargaining agreement. And so when we have those provisions in there, that's really just speaking to a handful of folks that are not in one of the city's unions. Specifically, that's, we have about 200 full-time employees throughout the city, excluding the library, and then, you know, a little over 10% of those 26 are in that nonrepresented category. The last most important thing to emphasize is we keep this in mind, is you know, this is a relationship and involves, and it is subject to change. It's changed many times before, and the council doesn't have to grandfather anyone. They don't have to make specific decisions. In some cases, we're recommending that, but that's more of a question of what you consider to be fair and equitable and appropriate than it is a mandate. Speaking of changes, this is the city's current Personnel Manual. It's changed very many times. It was first adopted back in 2006. It was amended, 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 so on. Just pretend I said that word 11 times, and that's the document we ended up with. So it's very difficult to navigate. It's very difficult for us as management and as leadership to administer. When I first came into the city, I spent more time than I wanted to, considering myself somewhat well-versed in these things, trying to understand what it was saying. I went into Rob's office. I said, you know, we should probably update this pretty high on our priority list. And Rob very graciously said, well, I agree. The City Council agrees. And by the way, I already recruited a little bit of help. I've presented this talk to some employees, and you know, it occurred, it was said to me, and it's true that, I have to give a little bit of credit where it's due. Where this work started was that we had brought in UIC's Public Affairs Program. The idea was, let's just take a look, let's get some student help in that can really survey our comparable communities and look at a few topics that we think are top of mind. Their recommendations are, in some ways, reflected in this work product. Again, the lift was probably more than students, so it took a lot more time than that. But they gave us some interesting thoughts that we'll talk about throughout this document. What we asked them to look at was, hey, what are communities doing around us for remote work? What are they doing for the use of paid time off, and how are they recognizing employees? The recommendations they came back with, and again, we'll keep talking about these throughout the document, was, one, to move from the city's traditional accrued leave system, which is you accrue sick time, vacation time, unique to the public sector, compensatory time, and to instead just offer employees unlimited paid time off, which, again, we'll come back to. And they recommended we create a formalized hybrid or remote work policy. They recommended that we should implement more incentives for merit of different types. And then they also recommended that we should eliminate OT or compensatory pay for FLSA-exempt employees, right? So these are employees that federal law recognizes, you know, are supervisors. They have special management responsibilities. They can be paid on a salary basis, and that reflects that they may work more than 40 hours a week. The city, as I understand it, during the economic downturn, you know, started asking supervisor employees to do a lot more with less, including at the expense of their personal time. And part of the compensation offered to them for that was, hey, you're having to do more than you signed up for. We'll pay you for the extra work you're doing. Fair deal at the time, still the rules today, in what, in who we, or who these students surveyed and what we're aware of, a unique arrangement in Chicagoland. So we received this report from UIC. We talk a lot internally. We know that they had taken a crack, not a bad one, at trying to synthesize all these updates, but we knew we really needed to start over to modernize this and make it something that's usable for the city that balances really the ultimate goal of our personnel program, which is to get the most bang for our buck, and hopefully to do that in a way that's not just, that is, helps us attract talent, right? More specifically, we're trying to make modern, innovative, attractive policies. We're not just trying to catch up. We're trying to go a step ahead of, you know, where the bar is in trying to compete for talent. We're trying to equalize employees or reduce tiering. Over time, over these different steps, it was important to the City Council that employees who were hired on could generally rely upon the benefits package or the accruals or so on that they had at the time of hire. And so there was a series of grandfathering steps taken. Were progressively, policy changes were applied to new employees. Existing employees were held harmless, and now that's diverged enough where an employee, just based on their date of hire, gets pretty substantially different benefit packages, even though they might be doing the same work at the same rate of pay. We need to meet legal requirements. I mean, the law and best practice have just come a long way for a lot of this book, and a lot of this book is just legally what we have to do as an employer. And then finally, we want to make this easy to administer. We want to make it easy to use, and make it easier for people to understand, because it is so important at those times when it comes into play. So these are the sections. Again, we're getting more into the topic. This is mostly here for your preference, you know, in print, if you come back to this. But we'll go through each of these sections one at a time and just highlight the key changes from our current practices. The introduction hasn't really changed. Welcome to the manual. You're an at-will employee. You know, you may be, you know, released at will. You may leave at will. Safe and welcoming workplace is kind of our catchphrase for a lot of these. Again, most of the policies in here are legally required. They're important for making a safe and welcoming workplace, a workplace that's free from discrimination, that's accommodating for people with disabilities, and so on. The first change we're recommending here, you'll keep seeing these in yellow, is some updates to our drug and alcohol-free workplace policy. The first is that the city took a position common at its time when the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act was introduced in being as broad as possible, saying, hey, maybe the state says marijuana is legal. If you test positive, you're done, and we're going to keep doing pre-employment testing. The state has tried to say no to that. There's some case law in other states, as I understand it, that says you can follow the federal law. We don't have to get a whole lot into that, except to say that generally, the private sector is not as much looking for marijuana in pre-employment work, right? In many cases, they can't and still attract talent. What this manual does is for positions where marijuana use really matters. We're talking about CDL positions where we have to test. We're talking about police and firefighters that are off the non-duty. They continue to be tested at pre-employment. They continue to be tested, you know, throughout their time in the city's employ, and if they test positive, they can be discharged, whether or not they're under the influence at the job, on the job. For other employees, we're taking really a more neutral position, which is, we don't test you when you come in. If you're under the influence at the workplace, you'll be fired. This, we think, is still consistent with the city's goals and consistent with how we work with our workforce. The second is, again, a more, I think, an intuitive change, but we just want to make sure that we're clear that if employee gets in an accident on the job and they're potentially at fault, they should expect to be drug tested. The current policy isn't very clear on that. We think it's important that we capture that. That's for the employees' protection as well as the city's, and we're in the best position by just saying we're always going to do it, instead of trying to make a case-by-case determination. Hiring and recruitment doesn't really change. Again, we hire for the best qualified person for the job. We promote on the same basis. Folks serve a probationary period when they come in. And then the second half here is really just mostly requirements of law or how we navigate weird circumstances. You know, if an elected official or their relative was to work for the city, if, you know, city employees are in romantic relationships with each other, these are common sense rules that help us navigate those situations. Work schedule, attendance, wages. This is just, when do you show up for work? How long do you work? When do you get your lunch break? And then real fundamentals. The first, this blue one, is one that we would say is hopefully implied in the job, but we're writing it down for the first time perhaps, which is, this is a 24/7, 365 operation. People may be required to work when it's snowing outside. They might be required to work in emergencies, and we need city staff who take the job to be able to do that. In the holiday section, we're not proposing to add any new holidays. The current manual says that that is paid at a total of two and a half times, which is a bit outside of the norm. The new manual, again, for a very small number of employees who meet this provision, they just get double time. So for the time they work, they make 2X. For any time they don't work, they still get holiday pay. The last is one of these UIC recommendations, which is to make a formal remote work policy. The city already offers a regular remote work where it can with its operations. The goal here is really to stick our toes in the water a little bit. We're not going to, you know, reduce our infrastructure costs from this. We're not going to reduce our office sizes from this. But for high-performing employees, can we offer this, really in the sense of a benefit for their convenience that helps support recruitment retention and, you know, keeps us on par with some of the private sector competition that some classes of our employees are exposed to. So all this allows is that one day a week on a regular basis, if you're high-performing, if your duties will allow for it, you can work from home on that regular basis. That day, you may have to move around a little bit for the city's needs, but one day a week. Time away from work is probably the biggest set of changes we're talking about. I'll talk about the rest, and I'll come back to unlimited PTO. Most of these requirements here are just, again, requirements of law, and we are modernizing how we deal with them. So when it comes to FMLA, if you have a serious medical incident, if it comes to VESA, which is if you're the victim of a crime of violence, we are, we, the city, are required to offer a certain amount of unpaid leave, and that's available to you as an employee. The only real thing in here that isn't required by law is just, we get people paid time for breathing. You have to get them paid. The biggest change in the book is in proposing and looking at this unlimited paid time off policy. The UIC students, I think, kind of had a struggle with these, and this, but maybe for, you know, different reasons, they looked, as a student might, without being in the workforce, and said, hey, all these private sector entities are doing unlimited paid time off. They're using it to reduce time off costs. The city wants to reduce costs, so you should do the same thing, right? That's, that's not our goal. Our goal is to encourage people to take a reasonable amount of time off, not to discourage it. It's encouraging taking time away from work in a manner that's consistent with the performance of folks' job duties. The important parts to the city for this, the important parts to the finances for this are that, again, it's an elegant way, we think, to eliminate compensatory time for exempt employees. It's an elegant way to reduce the amount of exposure that the city has for lump-sum payments at the end of employment. This reorients the city's compensation philosophy to paying people what they're worth at the time that they work the hours. Just to put the numbers in perspective a little bit, for the 26 or so employees that are eligible for this, the value of their time at separation, which is a bit policy but mostly just things the city is required to pay out, is about $650,000. That's reflected on our books. It's, you know, it's money that we don't consider as having in our pockets. You know, it has some budgetary effects when it comes in, but we account for it. But it's payments that are deferred until someone's done working with the city, which philosophically isn't great. And then potentially, it can represent an increase to pension that the pension system isn't accounting for for the rest of the employee's lifetime. So, you know, the final payment comes out, the value of the pension goes out. It's not, you know, that is what it is, but we haven't been paying it enough to pay that level of pension the entire time. And so then our contributions go up at the back. Part of the goals of being able to realign when these payments are going out, when this compensation is going out, is just that it puts us in a better pension funding situation across all of the city's pension funds. Consequences of this approach, right, and actually, let me back up a bit and say, I hope the term speaks for itself, but when we say unlimited paid time off, we mean that, again, you can take time off consistent with performance. If you're sick, you get unlimited paid time off. We, you know, we keep a running total of what it is, but there's not an accrual. There's very little in the way of limits. If you need to take vacation, if you want to take vacation, you can do that within your job performance. You can. Today, if you were to turn in for a vacation the city can't accommodate, the city could turn down your vacation request. So in some ways, I want to emphasize that this isn't allowing folks to take it and run with it. I mean, there's still a lot of guardrails in here, and we think it encourages effective performance. Consequences of this, you know, there's all these types of unpaid leave that we, you know, that we talked about, that the city has to require in certain situations. The proposal from staff is just that, essentially, you know, when we have to offer these types of leave, you know, we're, we may not necessarily have to pay them today. Oftentimes, folks expend down leave, and they're paid anyway. But if not, this isn't really long enough to go and recruit our employees, or, you know, it's a very minor, it doesn't happen very often, even in how large our employee pool is. pool is. In this system, part of what we're proposing to do to navigate this is just that the city essentially takes the risk for those 26 employees. You know, instead of having to, you know, keep a large bank of vacation time or sick time in the event that something happens to you or your family, the city will pay up to a certain number of weeks across all these causes in a year. So that's serious illness, that's paternity, that's if you're the victim of a crime. These life events, good or bad, that's just built into the system in a way that we think the city's management can navigate. There's a transition question here, right? Which is, we have all these existing employees, how do we navigate transitioning them into this new system? For current employees, our proposal is that, and there's an opt-out, we'll come back to that, but there's some choice here for the employee. For current employees, we'll say, okay, let's imagine you retired, pick how many hours you want, you can take one payment, you take however many payments you like, you need to take all this time in a cash value or certain other types of contributions by the end of next year, two years from now. So that gives you plenty of time to make a choice and plenty of time to collect the money from the choice. This time always has to be paid out at the employee's rate of pay when it's cashed out. So folks who wait a little longer, wait a little more. But again, it really closes out and pays out that liability of the city pretty efficiently and gives people a bonus, you know, in the middle of their working careers that they would have had to wait until the end to realize. They can use it, they can invest it, they can do what they like to do, depending on the timing of their retirement. For many employees who get the larger payouts, that will still factor into their final retirement. For new and promoted employees, you know, they're under different leave plans as it is. When they come into this plan, they're oftentimes having to take a drop between, you know, the leave plans negotiated through collective bargaining agreements and the leave plans offered to non-represented employees. Our proposal there is, you come in, we take your time. At the end of probation, so you're not going back down to the union, we just give you a check for what you would have received, again, at retirement. Of course, the difference is your salary has just, your base salary has gone up from point A to point B, and that represents, again, the time the city would have had to pay anyway, but here it is. Finally, again, going back to the history of this policy, you know, we, we know that this compensatory time or this vacation is part of how some folks see or structure or experience their pay. In some cases, based on market, based on payouts that have happened, some employees would be offered a salary increase just to try and true up, you know, the cash value of that leave that they were getting to what the actual market conditions are for their position. That's a whole lot. I want to pause here for a little bit and see if there's any questions on PTO before we keep going.
Yes, Aldrin O'Brien. So I currently work in an unlimited PTO setting. And for, before we kick into FMLA or any of those, we get two weeks. Is that kind of where you're thinking at the city as well? Like, you get two weeks to get yourself full, if you can't, then you'd have to go into FMLA, or if it's something where you go straight into unpaid FMLA? Like, how is the city?
Sure. So multiple answers to that question, right? So let's just say I get sick. The limit to taking sick time is two weeks. The theory is if I need to be sick for longer than two weeks, that should be FMLA protected leave. So that's one part of the answer. The second part is, whenever an employee has a qualifying FMLA condition or event, we start counting FMLA. So our goal is, we want to job protect the employee, we want to be capturing those events when they start. So that FMLA clock could start ticking even before your two weeks out. The biggest thing to mention is, you know, there may be situations, at least on this proposal, where an employee may end up on unpaid leave, but generally speaking, if employee is on, you know, legally unpaid FMLA leave, we would be extending them paid time off through, as it's proposed, all of one type of leave, right? So you get 12 weeks for FMLA, you get 12 weeks for visa, you get 12 weeks for many of these different types of leave. The city would pay up to 12 weeks for all of those legally required positions in the span of a year. Knowing that, you know, at the point where we have to keep the employee on the books anyway, you might be able to get a little bit of salary savings, but you can't really, you know, you can't go hire a new employee. I mean, that's, we're, we're working with that either way.
So how public is this document? Obviously, now it's very public, but I'm assuming, prior to this, is there, has there been some reaction from staff, or has there been no?
Reaction from staff who'd be affected by this? And is there any initial shakeout from those who are aware of the impending changes? Positive, negative, or what, what is the, you know, at this point, what is the response, if there is one?
Sure. So the order here, we shared this with directors, management-level folks, what, maybe six weeks ago, Rob?
In concepts, we had brought this up to directors.
I want to say it was five to six weeks ago, and then shared it more broadly during a meeting with all of the impacted employees. And from there, shared the concepts of what was proposed, so that individuals were allowed an opportunity to provide feedback. When we initially wrote the document, it did not, or not the document, when we initially, excuse me, when we initially put together the proposals for the document itself, we had not included a grandfathering clause. And so individuals who have already been working with the city, and I believe Glenn is possibly going to be touching on this within the presentation, so I won't jump too far ahead. But just as a preview, the individuals who have, who are already hired and working for the city have the option of continuing on their existing benefit package or to choose to opt, to, or to choose to move into this unlimited PTO approach. And that came up as a result of individuals who have been here for a number of years and have handled their paid time off in such a way that is part of their planning. And whether it was for time off purposes or for retirement purposes, the change was expressed to us as being impactful. And so in order to find a medium and to be accommodative of individuals who may have been working within the context rightfully so, because that has been our employee manual all this time, to allow them the opportunity to choose between remaining, because they already have that benefit, on the existing plan, or to move to this new approach by way of being paid out the time and then switching to unlimited PTO. I think Glenn will probably speak about it a little bit more in depth. But to answer your question, yes, we have shared this with, with city staff. We've welcomed the opportunity for individuals to ask questions. We've also, by requirement of the collective bargaining agreements, made the bargaining units aware that changes are proposed to the employee manual. However, by and large, the impactful changes in this, in this document are already bargained for and included in those collective bargaining agreements. So unless they are thinking down the road for when they come out of the bargaining units, those, these changes don't impact individuals who are within bargaining units. To answer your question about feedback, I think, given the change in approach towards allowing individuals to opt out if they do not wish to participate in this program, I feel that that allowed individuals an option. And that helped bring people the opportunity to give some thought to, you know, what benefit approach is best for them. Moving forward, long-term, any individuals, as positions change, and there's turnover and attrition, what have you, individuals who are applying for that position, whether it's an external or an internal recruitment, would be going into it knowing that this is the policy that's in place. And so that's a decision point for anyone who is, who's ultimately pursuing that, that position. In our assumption, because this, you know, we ultimately won't know until we truly roll this out, we believe that we will be pretty competitive in the market for external recruitment with this policy. And internally, with the way that we approach this, internal promotions are always a benefit to employees. And being able to promote from within and to become a part of management and to ultimately become a director down the road is an aspirational goal. And I think that this provides a benefit in which individuals who are expected to work many hours, because in management roles, we are, we are working, as Glenn said, 24/7/365, the opportunity to take time away and take care of themselves, take care of their families, and be able to come back to work rested so that they continue to function at a higher, at a high energy and pace. So overall, there are employees who are really excited about this, some employees who we believe may choose to remain with the old, you know, to remain grandfathered in under the old plan. But for the most part, the feedback that we're getting is that people are looking at this with a eye towards new. Anytime there's change, I believe that there's always a little bit of angst that comes with it, and this is absolutely very different than things we've seen elsewhere. That said, I think with time and as people have had the opportunity to talk through different questions they've had, I believe that there is a comfort, there is an excitement to this from some employees. And some employees would probably prefer to remain on the old program. And so that's a, as we're proposing it a decision that we're leaving, that we recommend leaving to those employees who are currently employed by the city.
Questions or comments on that?
No. I mean, I'm assuming that the next, the process is that we're going to vote on this soon. And, and so I'm just curious if there's enough time for the employees who are going to be affected by this to, to have responded to it before we turn it into, in fact, an ordinance? And if they, if they feel like they'll have their, their opportunity to influence the place where they work to their advantage and be fully heard.
And that was one of the key components towards, the key components towards the meeting that we held with our staff, is that we want to hear from everyone and, and had given the opportunity for anyone to come to either Glenn, myself, to ask any questions that they have. With the way that we're structuring this, although there is the, you know, the, the proposal is that this manual becomes effective January 1, there would be time for employees to be able to take some time to think through. So it's not like we're going to be putting out to employees a requirement that you have a week and a half to decide what you want to do. Our goal is to be flexible with individuals and not to compel individuals to have to make a really, in some cases, big decision very quickly. It's also why we've allowed for this extended period through 2025 for individuals to receive the compensation payouts, that they can plan with their financial planners and whoever else, so that, you know, if there's tax implications or any sort of other impact, they have the time and place to be able to make those decisions as best meets their financial situation. So our goal is to work with our employees and, and I believe there's 19 employees, I'm going off the top of my head, who are 26. I was short. So 26 employees who we'd be working with. And our goal is to, to work with them so that no one feels that they are rushed into a decision, they'd be given the time. Ideally, within, you know, a six-month period to give some time towards whether or not they have the desire to move into the unlimited PTO or to remain grandfathered.
Just a little bit of flavor to that, to your point, Aldrin O'Brien. There have been a few minor comments that have been integrated into the draft, you've seen. Virtually all the comments we have about unlimited PTO are about, are about unlimited PTO, and within that set, it's about the opt-out. And that, for that reason, we've given folks that very extended runway of time to, to consider it and make their decisions.
Aldrin O'Brien.
I think I might wait till the next slot. Based on the conversation, I think some of what I'm interested in talking about might be on the next slot.
Very well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I've had Aldrin O'Brien.
How many of the 26 people are we thinking could opt out? So are we still going to have a huge subset of two different policies, or are we thinking it's a smaller subset of the 26?
So we're trying to determine. It's hard to predict exactly where people lie with respect to either choosing to move to the unlimited PTO or not. Functionally speaking, all 26 could choose to opt out if they want to. And then those positions would turn over, over time, as they move on or change positions, what have you. I can't give you an estimate at this moment, we haven't taken a formal survey of our employees. It'd be difficult for me to ascertain exactly how many of those individuals would desire to opt out. That said, I, the, what I will say is that the individuals who have been with the organization longer, who have acquired and accrued time, are individuals who have voiced more of a desire to opt out because of the amount of time that has been accrued on the books and allowed to accrue, just based on our personnel manual.
What is the, like, the implications to, how much is it going to cost us to manage? Who's on the unlimited? Who's got seven, I don't even know off the top of my head how many days everybody has? So Zach is going to take, like, somebody's going to have to manually be like, well, Rob's on the unlimited, so he can put as many as he wants, and then I need to make sure, like, what are we talking about, office time to manage now two completely different systems?
Functionally, from a management perspective, we are getting PTO reports from, from finance after each payroll period. Much of this is automated through our new payroll system, so at the time that someone decides that they want to remain grandfathered, it's just a matter of setting them up either in one system or the other, and then the payroll system is automatically then managing the PTO process. Now, with respect to, you know, from a manager's perspective, time off has to be approved no matter what. So this, this policy does not provide unilateral authority to any employee to just take time off. That will require a manager to just be aware of who is and who isn't on unlimited PTO. But again, because we're getting that reminder every two weeks from finance, it's, it's easily seen. And if an individual who is grandfathered gets to a point where they've drawn down their banks, a manager would be able to see that. And our payroll, our payroll coordinator is actually very good about pointing out when someone has reached that point.
Assistant City Manager, if you want to continue.
Sure. So much of our conversation focused around this topic. We felt it was important to offer employees who were already in a non-represented position, who were already in a plan of leave, to be able to continue that plan. We'll note, if you read through the, the draft, we're still fiddling this language, but our goal is that for these employees, if they choose to opt out, they will maintain, in every way we can, the, the status quo, right? So they'll continue to accrue vacation, sick time, they'll continue to accrue compensatory time, even if they're exempt, and they'll, to the extent that they are in, you know, if they would move from one row of the table to the next in one of those leave plans, so if they would hit a breakpoint in years of service, they'd continue to progress. It, you know, it still closes the door on future enrollments into that plan, but for the employee, they can choose to continue in, on the trajectory they're already on. As drafted, that choice starts when we implement the payroll work necessary. That's, we think, just a few weeks away after we flip the switch. The window to make that choice closes at the end of '24. The window, again, to take those payouts closes at the end of '25. Because, you know, there's a lot of attractiveness in some life circumstances to unlimited PTO, and there's, you know, a little bit of a moral hazard, right? Hey, look, I'm going to keep my time unless something bad happens, and then, oh, you know, maybe it's a good time for me to get unlimited PTO. You know, we want to emphasize there's risk on both sides of this. So that choice to opt out is time limited. You've got to be, you know, in good standing with the city, you've got to be here working when you take it, and once you take it, that's, that's it. You are on the slope to getting your time paid out. For those who opt out, there'll be no buyouts of time. So, except that, you know, the existing policy provides many ways for time to be bought out, they'll continue to have access to those, but we won't be offering to buy down their time in any extraordinary way. And then we wouldn't be offering that market salary adjustment for those employees, because, again, they're keeping the cash value that that leave has going forward. I would emphasize that, again, this opt-out is just for folks that are affected by this plan today. So folks that are promoted into a position where they would have to enter the unlimited PTO plan, they would not get a choice. So they'd get the check at the end of their probationary period.
Yes, Aldrin O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. And this might be more of a question for my peers here. I've had, kudos on the manual, way overdue, and appreciate putting it there. I am in agreement with everything in there except for this, there are no accruing. Is that my concern is, I know a lot of us have succession plan concerns, is, so I'd like to propose an idea here that we potentially could expand it to include any tier-one employee. These are our next leaders that are coming up. Is that when, clearly when people go into these roles, they know to go up in leadership, they are going to have to come out of the collective bargaining agreement, but also go into a leadership role. And that's a personal decision we all have to make in our careers, is do we want to take on additional responsibility, leave some things behind, obviously get additional responsibilities in leadership that way. What I'm struggling here with is that we could have people in any line of traction here that are being groomed by our current leaders to succeed them in the future. Could be near future, could be fine. Could be near future, could be five years, could be seven years down the road. That we've invested time in them, they've invested time in the city. Being a tenured employee is my concern, is that this could disinterest internal candidates to want to rise to higher lengths within the city from a succession planning perspective. $652,000 is a lot of money. That's a lot of money to carry on the books, knowing it's gonna accrue over the next three, five, seven, nine years. But when you break it down, and I'm just doing easy math here, it's, this would, ever current state today, it would only ever impact 26 people. We have 26 non-bargaining positions. 600,000 divided by 20 is roughly 30,000 employee, $30,000. Some are obviously on the higher end, some are probably right at that average of $30,000. $600,000 is 1% of our annual budget, or a little bit less. If I remember, in 60 to 70 million dollars, my, is that pretty close to our end? So it's 1% of our budget to invest potentially in our succession planning for future. So all I'm proposing with, I, I know we want to try and get this liability off of our books. It's happening in the private industry as well, across the board. My ask for my peers to consider, can we consider it hard, making it effective for staff that's hired as of tier-one and tier-two? I had to go research this myself, because this is, again, over the last 10 days, I've had numerous conversations with both Rob and Glenn. The research I was able to do, tier-one employees, it's a difference in the pension, based on the state. So it's the state regulations, the state law. Anybody hired after 2011, 1-1-2011 is considered tier-two. I'd like to put the DV, or the, the separator at anybody hired under our tier-one rules. Because when they came into the city, at this time, if we go into this effect in 2024, you have to make your decision, that could be up to 15 years that a staff member's invested for their career in the city, knowing that this was something they could carry with them. A lot of people save it for retirement planning, for making gaps between when insurance may pay for the city versus when you qualify for Medicare. It's a myriad of options people could have if they get this money. But it's also people that have been planning for this, for their career potentially. So I would just ask, I don't know if my peers have any thoughts on that. I'm for it. I would just like to kind of extend the time a little bit. And I don't know if it would get it off the books. Instead of by the end of 2025, might extend it to 2030. That I don't know, but I'd like consideration. I know if to draw the line someplace, in my mind, I can be comfortable with drawing it at when tier-two starts. Because those are newer folks in their careers, is that they're not, have invested at this time 15 years into a career. That's just, the way it's written now, I could support all 99% of other parts of the manual. This is not allowing me to sleep at night, is from a succession planning perspective. So I would just, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. It's just something I've been struggling with over the last two weeks and talked with Rob and Glenn about it. So love everything, if we could maybe say, clearly could opt out, absolutely. Just extend that cutoff to anybody hired pre-tier-two.
So before we have any responses to Alderman O'Brien's proposal here that we will discuss, so to clarify, for the opt-out deadline of 2025. Yeah, I'll stick with this one, thank you.
Wrong on which one it would be easier on.
So Assistant City Manager, could you just summarize this in the context of what Alderman O'Brien is proposing?
Sure. So right now, if you are a non-represented position, you would have till the end of 2024 to potentially make a choice to opt out, keep your current leave plan. As proposed, if you are promoted out or if you're newly hired, you don't have the choice of the, the current leave plan. That's not a plan those employees are in. And so they, they would have to move into unlimited PTO, they would have to be paid out. As I understand Alderman O'Brien's proposal, the idea is that for tier-one employees, they could choose to continue to enter that tier-one leave plan that's in effect today. Again, it would still be closed off to tier-two promotions, would still be closed off to new hires. It would just be those tier-one individuals who would be able to enter in. What I would foresee, we haven't talked too much about the implementation of this, we would probably give those individuals until the end of their probation, the, the time to choose opting out.
But with that additional context, Alderman Bouchet, you had a comment that you...
So I'm gonna disagree with you. So if we're talking about someone who's been with the city 15 years, so I'm gonna use myself as an example. I've been at my job 16 years. I have 30 more years till I can retire. I'm gonna keep accruing this paid time off, which I technically should be using for sick leave. So now we're encouraging people not to take vacation, not to take sick leave, not to take that time away from work. So there's no work-life balance when you're not taking, when you're accruing and saying, I'm gonna save that for retirement. So we are paying them at today's salary. In 30 years, I hope I'm not making what I'm making now. So now I'm gonna take money I should have been taking to make my work-life balance better, to not come to work when I'm sick. And I'm gonna get that at 30 years from now's salary rate. So that's gonna increase what I'm getting exponentially, and it's not forcing you to take vacation. So in my background of recreation, you're gonna force people to do it, or they're not going to. So I, I can't, I think we have to put that hard stop on this, it sucks. And being someone who was forced into it, it stinks when it first happens. But we can't let people in their early 40s sit with time, and they're gonna all of a sudden become directors, and they've accrued all of this time, and that is now gonna get paid out when they retire. That is exponential cost that we have to keep putting on our books as a city. Like, it's not, it's just gonna keep, to me, increasing what we have on the books, waiting for people to retire, instead of just saying, time to go, time to be done.
Alderman O'Brien.
So I'd like to look at it as a non-financial thing, just as a quality of life issue. Because there are, there are people who, there are people who will bank and bank and bank and bank about someday, 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 to their own, to their own demise, to the point of where, you know, I mean, where they, they get to 60 and they're, and they're sick, and they don't even get to enjoy a day of it, that they've been saving up forever and ever, hoping that it was gonna happen. Meantime, they get burned out. I mean, we've had employees who, in the past, I'll, I'll be careful about this, but we had employees in the past who really had no quality of life and that we witnessed that were just here all the time. And, and it's, it's not right. It, it's not right for their families, it's not right for a myriad of reasons. So I'm up for a hard stop regardless of the financial impacts. Not for the financial reasons, for the, for the health of the employees, overall, that this is a better place to work because you're not burned out. You're, you're not, you're not living for someday versus you're living for now. I mean, we're gonna enjoy our life, we're gonna take a really decent vacation every year, and, and all those things. So I, I'm up for a, a hard stop. I, I get it, it's gonna be hard for some people to, to make that choice, or to have that choice made for them. I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do long-term, it should make it a better place to work.
Thank you. Any additional comments on policy change here?
I agree with both of those. I'm just asking that we extend it again. I mean, I, I don't disagree. And I don't have the magic crystal ball, I don't think staff does either, to know when that new end date might be. I mean, I, I like, like, we give an employer choice, is that you can take it or you can't. So that's still versus pigeonholing, forcing somebody in to take it, that they have the choice. They still would have the choice that staff does today, either get cashed out or not. I'm just asking to move the deadline of when it comes into place. Because I see it as a detriment to succession planning from that perspective. And you're right, it is a large dollar amount, but when you break it down, it's average of $30,000 per employee or less than 1% of our budget. That's still gonna grow, but the budget will continue to grow, I assume so. Revenues will continue to hopefully go for the city, expenses will obviously go for the city. But it's 1%, so I, I'm with you, is if we just remove, to me, it's not a financial decision. It's a, being a preferred employer position. I agree with you, the fin, we can take the finances out of it because it's miniscule, it's 1% of the budget. So I, I don't disagree. I'm just asking if we can move the hard deadline so we don't potentially impede our succession planning. Because everybody knows, I think, I shouldn't say everybody knows, people like to see promotion from within. This could curb that from happening, and that oftentimes has a morale issue with staff. So that's all I'm asking, is if we can just move the deadline to whatever date it might be of anybody that was hired pre-tier-two.
So Alderman O'Brien, I'm gonna actually have City Manager Rob Sabo talk from the staff perspective, because I think you brought a lot about, a lot about staff. So we'll have our, you know, Head of Operations give an idea of what we're looking at.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for proposing and, and considering this question. One thing that I want to bring, just for context and, and for consideration, as, as the group contemplates this question, is when we looked at this proposal and we look at the question of succession planning, one of the big components to succession planning is compensation. And in looking at historically the way that we have structured our compensation, we've structured it such that, and, and this has been information that's both anecdotally been relayed to me and also just what I've seen and verified. We've structured our compensation when individuals take position compared to market low. And those individuals have been told, you're being paid low, but don't worry, you'll get comp time. You will get to, you'll get to be able to, you'll get to cash out your vacation time. And so by virtue of that, you will be probably above market. The difficulty from a financial and budget standpoint is that when you look at our past, for example, IRF postings, which we are required to put up, all of the, the compensation that individuals are taking. Our finance department has to predict and project, based on just historic usage as well as historical cash outs, what an individual is, is going to be taking in the upcoming year. And it creates a lot of scenarios where we are paying out above what we've budgeted for that position. And it's, you know, we, we, we account for it with the year-end budget adjustments. But functionally speaking, and, and thinking about how we approach the succession planning question here, I think if we are paying someone at the initial proposal, when they, when they're considered and, and we post this position, a wage that is really competitive with market, and at the same time, selling really the, the, the point that an individual, for example, and, and in all these cases, likely, an individual's coming out of a bargaining unit. And in many cases, that individual might be on a shift type of duty, where they are on a either 24/48 type of shift, or they might be working nights, or they just, their schedules are a little bit less out of their control. When you move into a management position, you gain a lot more control of your schedule. Your work-life balance has the opportunity to kind of even out. And so one of the succession planning points is that opportunity that you're no longer working a shift, you're no longer working force backs. Yes, there are emergencies, and there are times where you'd have to be responsive. But as a manager, our, our directors here can attest to this, I'm not micromanaging our staff. We're managing through expectations and setting, you know, we're setting expectations of what people are gonna produce. And so we, we did really kind of contemplate this question of, you know, will we have individuals who apply from within or not? At the end of the day, if there are individuals who are applying solely on the basis of financial reasons, I question sometimes the ultimate intent, you know? Is, is this person gonna be here to work hard as a public sector employee? Are they ultimately chasing a better opportunity? And by no means do we want to take that away from anyone. I think that by providing a competitive compensation package, competitive benefits, we really do make ourselves an employer of choice. But part of that growth and coming out of, out of, you know, shift work and, and out of those types of positions is this opportunity to gain a lot more control over your schedule as a manager. You have that managerial discretion over your own schedule. And as we look at this too, our goal would be to adjust our compensation so that we are competitive with market and are putting people in, in a compensation's package that makes it difficult for them to consider leaving our organization. So I just wanted to offer that from a perspective that staff took a look at this and, and really contemplated, you know? It's almost kind of the grass is greener approach, you know? When we have these kind of conversations, we always invite and welcome the opportunity to take a lot of externalities and internal comparability. And in some cases, there are communities out there that are just substantially larger than us that may offer more compensation. But that comes with the fact that you're managing a significantly larger budget and a larger department and more, just more overall that goes into that role's supervisory duties. And so through all of those mechanisms, there's, there's very well put-together ways to structure compensation so that it remains competitive. And so that's where, we, we did go through this question when we were kind of formulating all the different approaches to this. And that's where we landed on, on the recommendation that we did, was that we take a look at the compensation we are actually offering to individuals as they are seek, or as we are needing individuals to be promoted from within. Because that is ultimately our goal as well. We invest in our employees, we do tuition reimbursement, we, we really do work hard to develop our employees from within so they do have the ability to grow with us and to stay with us. We don't want to discourage that upward mobility. But I think if we offer competitive compensation matched with the benefits and opportunities that exist for a department director position, I believe that we will have individuals who are interested in continuing to pursue those higher level positions. So I wanted to, I wanted to share that perspective.
Yeah, so, and then to just emphasize as well, while it's not included in the summaries that we have here or in the document that was presented with the new employee handbook, it sounds like benchmarking would be a component of that. So in, in addition to switching the PTO accrual, it would then be, okay, well, the salary itself is actually increasing to compensate for exactly what we were talking about, how to plan for an anticipated benefit when taking on new responsibilities. Does that modify the proposal that you have before us here?
Struggling with, agree with the whole intent and everything, just, I don't need to say it a third time, but just backing that cut over time.
Unfortunately, Alderman, Alderman Viziano is absent this evening. However, we can put the policy recommendation to a straw vote if you'd like.
That would be great, yeah.
So regarding then Alderman O'Brien's proposal to incorporate the opt-in to move from 2025, so about 24 months from today, to what would be the future?
That, that's what I don't have the crystal ball. The way that I would frame it is anybody that's hired under tier-two, so anybody that's hired pre-2011.
Tier-one.
Tier, anybody that's hired in tier-one, which expired on 12/31 of 2010.
Please.
Brian's proposal is, for existing employees, that, that opt-in, opt-out time would stay at the end of next year. It's really for newly promoted employees who would get, I'm speaking for you here, Alderman O'Brien, a, a reasonable opt-out period after their promotion to choose one or the other.
You summed up perfectly, based on our conversation. Right, it's just, shouldn't, anybody that comes in new to the organization, that they go onto what the new proposed policy is. Anybody that's currently with the organization as a tier-two employee, hired after 1-1-2011, is under this one. I'm just wondering, anybody in that tier-one that maybe have the option for promotion at that time, and I think that's, that's a generous compromise if we can get there, within their year probationary, it could probably six months, I could be open to that, three months, six months. I certainly think a year is generous. At that time, should Kevin O'Brien get promoted out of a CBA into a leadership role, I have to tell Rob or leadership, I'm opting out, cash it. They have the same options as staff does now, just when it's their turn, if they're hired pre-tier-two.
Yes, City Managers.
So under the existing bar, uh, excuse me, the existing personnel rules and regulations, the date that we have in here is November 2nd, 2010. So anyone hired before, on or before November 2nd, 2010 would be, what would be included in Alderman O'Brien's proposal?
Top level of union represented individuals who we expect to move up, that would be almost all of them.
I just asked a clarifying question. So in that part, I, I think I'm tracking, so I'm 95% at a comfort level. So the way the proposal is now is, anybody hired pre-November 2nd? And I'm sure there's a reason we picked that date, because if all we're squabbling, I say squabbling, all we're discussing is Kevin wants 12/31 and we're at 12/4, is that, that's really what it's coming down to?
Proposal is, anyone who is in their existing role as a non-collectively bargained position would have the opportunity to opt out. After that position is vacated, anyone who would move into it would automatically move into unlimited PTO. The under, to make sure that we understand your proposal correctly, the way that we are understanding, or the way that I'm understanding it is that any employee who currently works for the city of Rolling Meadows, who has been hired on or before November 2nd, 2010, at the time that they were promoted to a non-bargaining unit position, would be given the option of either the unlimited PTO or to opt out and to continue with the city's tier-one benefits as they exist in the personnel manual today.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, okay, I'm leading there. Is there a reason that we're not going to 12/31? I'm sure there is, I'm just, how the November 2nd date's coming into play? That's what's my last hurdle.
Second date, simply the, from the actual personnel manual, when the tier-two was created... created, I can't speak to historically why that date was chosen, but in the manual itself, so there's, there's two separate tiering systems that I think are getting overlapped. So when we talk about tiering in the pension system, the state's pension system established that annual, after 11, excuse me, after 11/2011, everyone is a tier-two under IMRF tiering and, and downstate public safety pensions. When it comes to our, our Employee Manual, we've also created a tier-two program, however, our date is slightly different than the state's pension system. Our date within the Personnel Manual has that November 2nd, 2010 date, slightly, a little under two months before the, the state's pension 11/2011 date.
Yeah, no, but to Mr. Sabo's point, that was the date that the, the council adopted that ordinance, so they, they're just all existing employees.
So if that, I mean, tracking absolutely correctly now, I am comfortable with that. If I'm tracking correctly, it's a difference of a six weeks, hopefully one or two employees aren't caught in that six-week gap or so, but I could get to that point, is if we could give the option pre-whatever, November 2nd, 2010, because again, it's that six-week window, that employee, should they get promoted at that time, they would have, I even think probably three or six months is reasonable, I know those, these else can be worked out, do either opt out or stay in. I, I could get behind that.
Yeah, and ultimately, that's a policy question for the council, but.
Okay, so now that we have that clarified, any questions about what we're about to vote on as a straw vote for the council? Is that clear with the, what is being, what Alderman O'Brien is proposing? Alderman Kohler, you look like you have a question.
Can we have it just restated?
Please restate the policy.
Is that any current employee of the city that was hired, that's a non-collective bargaining agreement member, that was hired pre-
No, that's currently in collective bargaining.
Right, that is currently in a collective bargaining agreement, thank you, Mayor, currently in a collective bargaining agreement, that was hired pre-November 2nd, 2010, when the city adopted their two-tier policy, should they be promoted to a non-CBA position, a leadership position, they would have the ability to either opt in or out of the new policy, within six months of their pro, um, promotion. I probably didn't say it as eloquently as City Manager Sabo or Cole could do, but I tried.
If anybody's written that down, congratulations.
Yes, please.
So the policy does have a man, a provision regarding those who are hired or those who become non-represented after January 1, and what this states is of 2024, is that they'll automatically be included in the unlimited PTO. What you're asking is those employees who become non-represented employees after January 1 will be given an option to either opt in or opt out for a certain period of time.
Unless they're a new hire.
New hires, it will automatically apply, but those who are currently existing employees that at some point in time become non-re, non-represented employees, they will be given an option to opt in or out.
I think I'm leaning that more to just, I don't.
That are tier-one.
Correct, anybody prior to that, so we make that distinction between one and two.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I, that, that is exactly right.
Alderman O'Brien.
Because you think those employees took, took the promotion with the thought that they would have accrual and not unlimited PTO.
I have to imagine it's figuring in some, depending where people are at in their stages of career, if I was 23 or 24, no, I'm not thinking about that. But if I was at that time, potentially 14 or 15 years into a career, and I'm looking, I can tell I'm being groomed, I'm getting the train to be groomed, it probably has entered my mind. But if I was a 22-year-old or 24-year-old, probably not. That's why, that's where I came up with that.
And we've also had some commentary as well from City Manager Sabo discussing that in addition to this change in the PTO accrual, in order to encourage the use of PTO, that there would be benchmarking to make sure that the salaries are not always the lowest within their comparable tier. Okay, any other clarifications from the council? Okay, then we will do a straw vote in favor of Alderman O'Brien's proposed changes to the Personnel Manual, which would create a grandfather opportunity for tier-one employees as stipulated previously. All those in favor of that, please raise your hand. And that does, that fails. Okay, so then, any additional proposals or changes to the policy or any other discussion items? Alderman O'Brien, I think you pooped everybody out. Okay, then let's continue.
Through the heaviest part, so we're, we're on the down, the downslope. I've only got a couple more charts. So we talked about unlimited PTO, the next chapter, compensation and performance management. This is a direction that the City Council's been going in, I believe, for a while, but just, we're trying to put in here the, the bones really of, you know, a primarily merit-focused compensation plan for these individuals that are non-represented. Allow me to illustrate by contrast, we'll come back to the slide. This is a common system in government work, this is how most of our collective bargaining agreements work. So you have a, it's called a step and grade system, you have a grade, this is the federal schedule, so you pick a row, and then you start at some step, often it's step one, conceptually, or maybe it's step two or step three, whatever. And then each year, as long as your performance is acceptable or better, you're, you're going to move over by a step, right? You're going to keep moving laterally in the chart, primarily on the basis of seniority, unless your performance is, is really deficient. This can be a little misleading, right, in that in addition to, in most step and grade systems, you know, in addition to seniority, the, the chart is also, every number on the chart is going up a little bit every year, right? Every year, every step is going up by a little bit of a cola, and so you're moving over in seniority, and then the chart is coming up a little bit with you with inflation. And so you, you make strong progress up to that maximum step, which, you know, the employer has said is the maximum payment they're willing to offer for that particular position, that's the value of your seniority and your experience, and, you know, many systems will offer a lump sum at that point, but that's really, that's, you know, the end of your incentives. What we're looking at here more is, again, more of a private sector approach and more of a approach to, you know, just make sure, especially for these non-represented employees that are primarily management and supervisory, that we're making the most incentives we can for competition, you know, with the outside as we need to, to attract good talent, and then to encourage continued performance. So the framework here is that the City Manager, Mr. Sabo, has, you know, very broad discretion to set salaries, there's some guidelines in there set out by the City Council by you adopting this, which is primarily, it's based on merit, seniority, of course, affects merit, but, you know, merit is, is the key principle. We're also looking and setting those salaries at market comparables, at pay compression, which is the idea that, for example, someone who's supervising should usually make more than someone they're supervise, that is supervised, and of course, internal equity, trying to make sure someone gets paid for the same work regardless of department. Instead of looking more at a, and, and this will be something for the council to figure out as, as it works through this, but instead of looking more at a cola system, we're establishing these steps, the step plan has been gone for a while now. We're really, the budgetary control method is to assign a merit pool, so a percentage of total salaries, and then that would essentially be divvied out, weighted by performance to employees. As part of that system, I know a goal of Manager Sabos has been to update how the city does performance reviews for these employees, that's something we're close to implementing and will start implementing with department heads if this policy's approved, and then later on, roll out to other employee classes, again, trying to make sure we have a robust, but also a, you know, an orderly system of evaluating folks and giving them good performance feedback, kind of throughout the year and then especially at the point of a salary adjustment. Any questions on that, the last heavy topic before we keep going?
Yes, Alderman Kohler.
I don't know, I remember a previous discussion where we talked about supervisory differences, and I'm not sure if I understand if we're keeping that or eliminating that.
Sure, so in the existing, again, this is a study in contrast, right? So in the existing- Existing Personnel Rules and Regulations, it is what I would call a, a system very typical to the, to the 80s and 90s, right? It originally presumed more of a step and grade system, so thick steps, and then there are a lot of special circumstance rules, right? So one rule said that if you're a supervisor, you should always make 5% more than anyone you're supervising. Another rule was if you're acting up, so if you're filling in an interim role, you get a little bit here, and then a little bit there, and a little bit there, and a lot of different ways to accentuate for different circumstances, those steps and grades, we'll be talking about one again here in a little bit. This says that, you know, those are to be, those considerations are a guideline in setting the salary, but the, you know, the salary is set bearing in mind many factors, and no one is dispositive and no one is automatic.
So it's saying it's actual.
As opposed to required. That would be one way, but. Okay, getting towards the end, promise. So a couple incentives, as I mentioned, that accentuate this old step and grade system. One is a longevity incentive that stays in, so after so many years of experience with the city, service with the city, in addition to wherever your salary is, you start to make a percentage on top of that. There was an education incentive in there to incentivize employees who did not require a bachelor's to get up to and earn a bachelor's. That's, especially in this class of employees, that's fairly regular now, that's, that's normal and, and almost all of these cases expected, and for those that's not, they have access to a tuition reimbursement program. So this policy would close that education incentive to new enrollments or to moving up. Those that have it would continue to benefit from it until unless their longevity pay is, is more. So the employees held harmless, there's not a pay cut, but again, recognizing that now, in many, for many of these positions, the bachelor's is almost a, a job requirement. Talk through this. Sure.
The years of service in 6.3, so if somebody's been with the city, I'll just say in a bargaining unit position for 15 years and then moves in, those are all years of service counted in, even though they're moving into a different position, and that might make up for some of the disparity that we were talking about earlier, where somebody's coming in from a bargaining unit position, moving into a different position, but they're still going to have the fact that they've been here the 10 or 15 years, working in their benef-
Yeah, it's, so it's based on the, the start of any employee service with the city, there's some very narrow exceptions there that might make that lower or higher, like if you go to military service, there's special rules if you're laid off and come back, but essentially adds when someone starts working for the city in any capacity. Employee benefits, still roughly the same benefits package on health, dental, and life insurance, probably around the time we made many of these other changes, the city made a decision to restrict employee, to really push employees towards the HMO plan. Some bargaining units, those are restricted entirely to the HMO for new employees. In the case of non-represented employees, they're required to take the HMO plan for the first year. The insurance marketplace has changed, you know, we're in a risk pool, and we think that the market has come up to make, you know, PPO a less expensive choice. It still is more expensive, but we think that the premium structure and everything else has adjusted to make it where it's, you know, for some employees, for potential employees, an HMO is a major disadvantage, and we don't think it makes sense to keep that restriction in place going forward. The only other change here, tuition reimbursement, right now, the city's at a fixed $4,500 cap, that was the federal cap before tuition reimbursement became taxable, you know, back at the time it was adopted, and it was never updated. We're proposing to update that just to the current cap and to make sure it continues to follow the cap. That is again, an extra incentive for those employees that may be losing access to that employment incentive, to continue to pursue education and also to support education beyond the bachelor's level, which we know many employees seek. This other important city policy section is a whole list of things, many of them are newly written down. I hope they're all common sense, I'll describe them briefly as common sense and happen to answer questions. Workplace searches, if, if you bring something to the workplace you shouldn't, don't do that, leave it at home. If you're on city property, that might be found. Authorized media contact, don't talk to the media on behalf of the city unless someone in management told you you should. Driver's license verification, if people are driving city vehicles, we're going to keep making sure that you're legal to drive them, and if you get a traffic ticket, you're going to be on the hook for paying it. Personal cell phones, want to make sure people are using those responsibly, and that if they need to use them for work, that really they should be getting a work phone. Content, dental information, keep things confidential. Outside employment, you need to get permission from us because many times that can involve conflicts of interest. Representing private interests in court, and for many of the things someone would sue the city for as an employee, they, they are protected for doing that. If it's not one of those things, you probably shouldn't sue your employer, that might not work out well for you. Disclosing interest in legislation, this is the idea that employee is going to appear on their own before city bodies or the city council. In some cases, again, they have the right to do that, it just asks that folks tell us before they do that. And finally, personal social media, just like with other media, we don't want people saying they're representing the city and/or using that to harass people at the workplace or, or any of, a lot of really bad things. Workplace safety, again, common sense expectations, if you're injured, you need to tell management, we really, really need that, and just some more rules about making sure that we're notified when there's, you know, accidents and tying into some of these changes around post-accident drug testing. Conduct and discipline, nothing really changes, if you mess up, we like progressive discipline, you could get fired. And finally, separation and exit, there's a retirement notice incentive, so encouraging people to give us advance notice when they plan to retire for our succession planning to go into effect. That's currently tied to time off, which now many employees won't have, so it doesn't really make sense to tie an incentive to that. Instead, it's just a flat cash sum, 500 bucks at six months, 250 bucks at three months. It's, it's not everything, it's not massive, but we think encourages people to plan just a little bit ahead and, you know, get themselves a nice steak dinner or something. So real quick, again, we talked about many of these, but what's not here, the education incentive is eliminated, that automatic pay changes are really more discretionary. There's an old section about employee suggestion awards, so you get a cash bonus for making a good, submitting a good idea, now that's just part of performance. Grievances right now are allowed for many topics, it's really narrowed to disciplinary matters, and then again, compensatory time for employees is eliminated unless you choose to opt out. So for exempt employees, that's built into their salary, for not exempt employees, they would just be paid overtime at the time when they work the hours. And that's it.
Yes, Alderman Kohler.
So it's a big, a lot to read, so I can't say I have everything completely well-understood, especially when I deal with Alderman O'Brien's comments and I go through his math, but a couple of things, and maybe our legal counsel can comment on this too. I think there's some statement in this about code of conduct, that the code of conduct is based on standard acceptable business code of conduct. But then there's this chapter 10 that lists a whole list of things on code of conduct. Is there bounds by which we can hold somebody accountable to meeting our code of conduct? And I only bring this up because it's a hot topic today. Code of conduct in business and in public is a big issue in employment situations, and I'm not sure we have that well-defined in this manual, what is our code of conduct? Again, we have one statement and another, employees will abide by the code of conduct that's generally accepted in business, and then I think it's chapter 10 that lists a whole bunch of expectations for code of conduct. So that's one comment, and along with that, that long list in, I think it's chapter 10, I could be wrong, but I think it's in chapter 10. I'd like to see some statement in there that aligns us with the Cook County Against Hate Program to specifically spell out that there's no tolerance for hate, because it's not in there now, that I saw. Just a comment.
I would think that, that you address that in other parts, most of that safety- And welcoming workplace part, but we're, we're happy to put in there too.
Do we have any requirements in our manual, in our employment position on required training? So I know we have a section, a whole section there on harassment, which I'm assuming is based on the Illinois State- which I'm assuming is based on the Illinois state laws on annual harassment training. Do we have anything in there for training on safety? Required safety training?
Sure. So the, the city does have. A number of policies that require safety training. Very many of those are position-specific and they, they just evolve with time. I mean, many OSHA-required trainings have been relatively static, but, you know, what, what it is and how frequently it is and so on, that's, that's evolving more than I personally would want to recommend to you in a document. There's a section in there about training and development, just in the sense that it lays out our rules when people are on training, and it gives a pathway for people to request additional training. But especially when we're talking about workplace safety, that's more handled in administrative rules and rules really at the department level. And those benefit from being a bit more nimble, and they're also a bit more technical, honestly.
So I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but there is OSHA requirements for what we have to do to make sure employees are trained in safety, am I correct?
Training's a particular word in OSHA land because it means that, you know, you need to. Attend a specific course. In many cases, OSHA says it needs to be, in, in different contexts, a competent person, right? So if you're trenching and backfilling, you need a competent person who's in charge of that site, who knows how to identify an unsafe practice. And generally speaking, that person becomes a competent person by, by going to a class.
So I think the way it's worded in the manual is that employees can request additional training if they feel that they need it. But I'm not sure that aligns with the OSHA requirements that we are required to train them, to be sure that they're operating safely. Again, I got to go through this and look that up, but I'm just trying to protect the city that we are abiding by hard training requirements as opposed to them saying, which is in the manual, I believe, that they can request it if they feel they need more training.
It, it's both. There's a section, I don't have it around in front of me, there's part of the manual that talks about when we require you to go to training, here's, here's the rules to be paid, so you can be required to go, right? For example, like our, our water operators have to go to a class. That's clear, very clear in, in the law. That may request option is really more, we have more professional development activities in mind, right? So I, I don't have to go, for example, to a, a, a planning conference. I can get the continuing education I need to keep my credential in other ways. But, you know, sometimes it benefits me to go to a conference, and there's a path where I can submit a request to Rob, that can be considered for inclusion in the budget. And we just make sure employees have an opportunity to make those requests and to make sure that they're, that as they see their development needs can be considered in addition to those conversations that might happen through the course of time or, or through the performance review process.
My last one for today would be the training for workplace safety and harassment and all those kind of things. Do we have anything for ensuring that our employees are being responsible environmentally? Not doing training in place to say that they will not conduct any thing that would risk the environment or city or water streams or anything?
Can't answer that question definitively. I would look to, there might be a couple people in this room who could.
Functionally speaking, with respect to the natural environment within the city, there are certain rules that the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District has. There are certain rules that the Illinois Department of Natural Resources has, I E P A. There's, there's a variety of different rules and regs out there that we have to abide by when we are out in the field working in various areas. Through standard operating procedures and requirements of the specific departments, some of those are addressed. Others are rely, we rely upon the state or county or the reclamation district and their requirements for maintaining the natural environment when we are conducting certain work. So to Assistant Manager Cole's earlier point, many of the training components are very individualized by department. Many of the individuals who are subject and required to go to training are also within collective bargaining agreements, and those prospective agreements also stipulate and set forth the ways in which the employer and the employees handle that type of training. In many ways, there's also management rates to require an employee to complete certain training requirements. And we retain, we retain many of those rights through our management rights provisions. So to answer your question, I, I believe that there are, in the different departments, based on the job duties assigned to those positions, various, various requirements for training or adherence to these laws. It's not specific and enumerated in depth within the actual personnel manual itself, though, as drafted currently.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking these questions is for two, two things. One, of course, we want to protect our employees' safety, we want to protect the environment and all that kind of stuff. But too often employers get in trouble because they didn't provide the training from a legal perspective, they have a liability on the employer, because an employee does something that they weren't trained properly or protecting the environment or, or those kind of things. And that becomes a liability to us, as stewards of the city's governance. We become liable for things that our employees might do because we didn't properly train them or educate them on the laws and requirements that we have. So I'm asking if we are making our employees aware of some kind through training and education on those requirements?
One, one way of looking at the personnel manual, though. The city does require those trainings that are specific to the employee positions with respect to health and safety. Those regulations may not, or, you know, those policies may not be in this employee manual because what this document is, is really the guidance for the employee. So it's how the employee is to be acting in the employment setting, where the OSHA-required training is the employer's obligation. The employer is obligated to provide that OSHA training to its employees in the specific industries. And it's the employer. This is not, this is more a manual that's created for the employee so that the employee knows what benefits they'll be getting, how they're supposed to conduct themselves. And it's really on the employer for OSHA training to know what training is required, know how often it's required, and to implement that training.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, I appreciate that.
Any additional questions or other comments? Before we look for a motion to adjourn this evening? Thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole, with that looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Hill for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second, all those in favor? All those opposed? You guys have it, and this meeting is adjourned at 9:05 PM.